Hello to all, I hope I'm being heard here. It's the first time I've used this system in this format, so do apologize if something goes awry. So, welcome to this Teams event for the update of Winchester's Landscape Character Assessment. I'm Winchester's Principal Landscape Architect Katie Morgans. I'm being supported by one of my colleagues Stuart Dunbar Dempsey, also a landscape architect. And the main presentation is being delivered by Alison Galbraith from the TerraFirma Consultancy. Winchester's current Landscape Character Assessment was published in 2004 and is now in need of an update. Although still a sound and very useful document, there have been changes in the district over the past 16 years, which should be reflected in this update, and that includes the creation of the South Downs National Park. As the South Downs have published their own Landscape Character Assessment, Winchester has decided to remove from ours areas of the district that fall within the National Park. This will mean that some parishes that lie in both Winchester's district and the South Downs will have two Landscape Character Assessments to refer to. This is explained further in the presentation. The existing Landscape Character Assessment was adopted as a supplementary planning document, and we intend that the update will also go through the adoption process in due course. We also hope that this version will be more user-friendly online than the current one. As attendees, you'll have the opportunity to submit questions and queries using the Q&amp;A function at the top right of the screen. This event is being recorded and will be uploaded to Winchester's YouTube channel in due course, and of course, we can send it out if you so request. We've set aside about two hours, although expect to be finished around 6pm. So I'd now like to introduce you to Alison Galbraith, a Director at the TerraFirma Consultancy, who will take you through the main amendments and updates to the Landscape Character Assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. So I've got about a dozen slides to go through, and then you can put questions into the chat as you go, and we will have a session at the end, once I've gone through the slides, to do our best to answer questions. There'll be a further opportunity after that to email in any questions or concerns after that. So I'm just going to go through what Landscape Character Assessment is and how Landscape Character Assessments are used, with some of the terminology that differs slightly between the Winchester Landscape Character Assessment and the one for the South Downs National Park. Then I'll talk about the update and how that will change, and then what the next steps are. So, starting on the first slide, you might be familiar with the images, Volume 1 and Volume 2 of the current Landscape Character Assessment, which is available online and in hard copy. So that's the document that we are updating, not completely redoing it, but updating, as Katie's mentioned, with some of the key changes that have happened. So Landscape Character Assessment is, as it says in the boxes on the right, the identification and description of variations in the character of the landscape. And it's where a unique combination of elements and features that make landscapes, one landscape distinct from another. It's a description of how landscape is perceived and experienced and valued by people. Next slide, please. So here are some of the photographs in the Winchester district. And you can see that there are some differences, some have got more trees, some are less trees, have more enclosed, different land uses, obviously it's a very rural district, so lot of farming mostly. Some have more exposure, up on the bottom right one is up on top of the downs. So you can see those differences within a local area. So this district, the differences are more subtle than you might see, for instance, between the Norfolk Broads and, say, the Scottish Highlands. But if you can picture kind of the elements that make up those two landscapes, it would be more of a stark difference between two different landscape character types and areas. Next slide, please. And here are a few of the aerial photographs. So looking from the air is one of the tools that we use in assessing the character. And you can see there are differences in land uses, field sizes, scales, the boundary types, the occurrence of woodland or heathland, whether the fields have got straight boundaries or wavy boundaries. You can see trees that follow a water course, so that's one of the tools that we use in our assessment. Next slide, thank you. So Landscape Character Assessments, how are they used? They do form part of the local plan, and this one, like the existing one, the update will form part of the local plan as supplementary planning document. So there's a bit of a process to go through to get that adopted. It provides, an understanding of the character of the landscape, provides evidence to inform strategic land use planning, green infrastructure strategies, neighbourhood planning. So all those things at a strategic and local level. And at the more detailed level, it provides evidence against which to assess proposed developments. So when planning applications come in, you've got the document to help you understand what the existing landscape character is and what the proposal might, how that might influence the existing landscape character. Next slide, please. And some of the terminology that is used in Landscape Character Assessment. It's, in the case of Winchester, the district is divided into landscape characters, which are the broader areas, so there's 20 odd of those, or there were, before the National Park came into being. And those are single, unique areas with discrete geographical areas with one or more landscape types. So you can see in the bottom left there, that's Landscape Character Area 19, which is along ports downhill, and it's made up of different landscape character types that are the coloured ones in the bottom right, mixed farmland and woodland, open arable and open arable exposed. And those landscape character types appear across, in different landscape character areas. So, but they're generic in nature, but they may occur in different areas. But broadly, they've got similar combinations of geology, topography, drainage, vegetation, historical land use and settlement pattern. So you can see that they do reappear the same type in different areas. And I'll just bring this up really because it differs to the National Park's Landscape Character Assessment, which has just been updated last year. So if you can go on to the next slide, please. It differs in that their landscape types are the bigger areas and made up of, so they've got this, in this example, Landscape Character Type A is made up of, Type A is made up of different landscape character areas, which are then given a geographic name, the Ouse to Eastbourne Open Downs, the East Winchester Open Downs, which occur across the length of the National Park. I wouldn't honestly get hung up about this, it's just, you may notice it if your parish is partly in one and partly in another, that you might see that there's that difference. I think, like I say, don't get hung up on it, it's just, I think the important thing is what each of them say that are the key characteristics, the things that are kind of important and worth saving, or also the problems that might be threatening that area. Okay, next slide, please. So the update to the existing Landscape Character Assessment. So like I said, it builds on the 2004 Character Assessment. There's been an update in the Natural England methodology, it came out in 2014, and also in the NPPF, the National Planning Policy Framework, which is the government's kind of overarching planning policies. And these have introduced the concept of valued landscapes, features and characteristics. So it's, before it was kind of a description, Landscape Character Assessment was describing what was there in a landscape, not necessarily distinguishing the thing between features and characteristics which were positive and those which may not have been positive and may even been detrimental. So that is a key thing that we've introduced into this update, is that we've identified where things are positive, and these are the things that matter and the things that we want to protect and enhance. The structure and level of detail will remain the same. We've updated the mapping, we've carried out new field surveys and taken new photographs representing all the different character areas. So those have been updated because things have changed. And obviously, we've checked through all the wording to make sure that everything still applies and introduced new things where there have been, say, new solar farms or anything like that that's become a feature within an area. And as Katie mentioned, there's been a number of boundary changes which have resulted from the formation of the National Park. We list what these are, and they are reflected in the mapping, so that the mapping for each LCA will just show the area outside the National Park boundary. And we've gone through the wording to make sure that things that were written that apply to bits that are now outside, you know, we've taken them out. Next slide, please. And I believe this map was sent out before the meeting, when you got the invitation to the meeting. This map won't appear in the study, but it does. We thought it was helpful for parishes to see how the National Park boundary has affected the landscape character areas in your parish. So that's the northern section, and then the next slide, please, is the southern section. Okay, so that's really just for reference. Next slide, please. Right, so I was talking about this new kind of aspect that we've introduced into the Character Assessment, where we've tried to identify characteristics which are valued and are sensitive to change. And this is a list of the types of things that we have drawn out as being positive features, you know, things that matter, so strong rural character in the sense of tranquility and remoteness, good accessibility from public footpaths and things, dark skies, evidence of sort of that historic human use, cultural connections, far-reaching views, high concentration of ecological sites, that sense of exposure, or in contrast, the sense of enclosure, strong use of traditional building materials. Some of the areas are important to the setting of Winchester. Some areas obviously have got numerous streams and ponds and springs and different water courses and roads with rural characters, with some sunken sections and good hedges and trees along the side, and in some places have a strong sense of history, so we've pulled those out as key things. Next, please. And just a few of the things that we've pulled out as being of threat or things that have changed since the 2004 study. So obviously, there's been increased development and suburbanisation and expansion of settlements, and also development that's taken place in rural areas, it's kind of scattered around. But, you know, when you see these in different places, they sort of build up to be, to a cumulative effect overall. And then there's been some new land uses like solar farms, vineyards, vertical elements, masts and so on. These are things that may have happened or are kind of happening generally and may be a threat to happen in some of these areas, and they would be particularly noticeable in some areas. Generally busier with more artificial lighting and tranquility affected. And then tree disease, you've probably heard of things like ash dieback. And some places, a lot of places really have got ash trees where they dominate. If we do start to lose them, that'll have a bigger effect on the character of the landscape. Next slide, please, can't remember where, okay, next steps. So we have a bit of work to do to to kind of make some changes to the document. We've produced a full document in draft. We've got a few things to change, getting the mapping right and some other things that we want to get right first, and then that'll be circulated to the parishes, so that you'll have a chance to review in more detail. And then you can submit questions to the council. And the responses that we come back with, any that we don't answer today, we'll pick up at that point as well, and responses will be emailed out to everybody. Then we can review the comments and incorporate them into a final draft of the document, and that will be issued, and then that will go through the consultation process for the local plan and end up being adopted as supplementary planning and will be available online. Is that the last slide, please? Yes, so some lovely daisies. So that's the end of my presentation, so I think we're going to go to questions and answers now.
Hi, so I think we've actually had one question come through on the question and answer function, which I answered, which was, it does, Landscape Character Assessment form an important part of neighbourhood plan? And yes, very much so, it should be used when formulating those. So I don't know if anyone else has any other questions that they'd like to submit via that. You will have to type them in, I'm afraid you're not able to shout them out on this particular setup. But, you know, if you don't, that's not a problem, we can just take them as emails, questions, and send the answers back around to everyone in sort of one hit. I'm assuming, because nothing has appeared, that we are without any further questions.
Sorry, Katie, I think someone asked whether we could make the slides available, and we can, can't we?
Yes, yes, I did put that in, that we can send the slides out. We will, obviously, any questions that need answering, we'll send those answers out. And once the update has had some further tweaks, we'll send that to you. It's quite a hefty document, so we'll have to see how best we can get that out. Probably as a some sort of WeTransfer-type link thing, I'm sure Bethany will help me on that. And obviously, today's presentation has been recorded and will go on our YouTube channel, but can be sent via email to those that want it to. Okay. I'm going to then assume that we're sort of at the end. Just see if there's any other questions that come in. Ah, there's some coming in now, are there? Let's have a look. Apologies for the hold-up. My computer's thinking about it, there we go. Ah, there you go, right. I shall publish that one.
There's a question that's come in, Katie.
Yes.
And about, just asking about the timescale for the draft document to go to parishes.
I'm not 100% sure on that one, I don't know if Alison is able to update me on how much longer is required.
I think probably a month at the most, I would have thought.
Okay, so we're looking at early to mid-September.
Yeah.
And then we request maybe some feedback by end of September until the beginning of October. I think that sounds sort of reasonable. Right, let's have a look at some of these questions here. Village design statements, the same as neighbourhood planning, you know, very important that it's referred to. Not obviously duplicated, but just referred to. The timescale, we've got that. Question, I live in a small hamlet just outside of the South Downs boundary. And then it seems to have, unfortunately, it seems to have run out of questions. Built too far from Winchester to access? I'm not quite sure.
I think that person's tried to put a question in where the name of the response should be. So if you do want to send in that question again, you can remain anonymous as well in this function. So if you want to try typing that question in again, then we can get back to you and answer that one.
Okay. And the question, how does this fit in with climate change and the effect on development, I would imagine? Well, it's a background document, it's evidence, it can be used to support any issues and concerns with regards to planning and development. I'm not sure if anyone else has, that's from our side from Winchester, that wants to feed into that question. So I think, has that got them all now?
I think on the climate change, sorry, I was just going to say on the climate change, I think we've put something in the introduction about climate change and the likely or potential kind of changes or impacts on the landscape in general, which we've already seen some of, really with vineyards and things, might become more prevalent. But yeah, if people feel that there needs to be more said about it or something that we missed, then when you have a look at it, you'll be able to let us know.
Okay. That's one here. Question, mention parishes, assume this will come to the town forum. Yes, of course, I mean, town forum was invited to this, and I think there's a couple of members. The city of Winchester comes under a sort of townscape rather than the Landscape Character Assessment, but it does all feed in, so on the boundary, so it is important. And is Winchester going to take notice of small rural communities? Well, every part of the district is important and all bits build up, so yes, of course. We will be doing, we do that already and will continue to do so. Okay, any other questions? Have I gone through all the published ones, Bethany?
Yes, I believe so, Katie, all of those have been answered now. There's one new question that's just come in, if you wanted to have a look at that one.
All right. Let's just put these both up and then we can have a look at those. So my hamlet landscape is being majorly affected by current changes, and although our parish council keeps putting information forward, Winchester's not listening. I, without knowing which hamlet in particular and what the particular changes and concerns are, I'm afraid I'm not able to provide feedback at this moment. But if you wanted to contact me direct, please do. And I'll look into it the best I can, I mean, I guess it's to do with certain developments, I would have thought, I'm not sure. And then another question from Compton and Shalford, my point was the compulsory planting of trees, is it to balance development and making sure that they plant the right type of vegetation? Yeah, well, tree planting is incredibly important, and we do, as, you know, as landscape responses for planning, we also encourage that and push as much as we can. So hopefully, it's coming from different, as many different areas, with a lot of pressure on a development from every single aspect, right down to, you know, whether they're even feasible. So we do look at every aspect, absolutely, and push on that vegetation and planting.
And I would say that in the Landscape Character Assessment, that's one of the things that we try to bring up, where a particular species is prevalent, and also conversely, where we've seen instances of ornamental hedgerows and things like that, which really don't fit in with the character. So we've tried to draw those things out in the Character Assessment as well, hopefully giving you, you know, evidence on which to make comments and make decisions.
Okay. Actually, on a point of trees, we have just put a link up on our website, on the landscape website, for, it's been produced by T-DAG, which I need to remember what that stands for now, Trees and
Trees and Design Action Group.
Action Group, that's right. And it's their tree selector, so it's very much, you know, you can put in the sort of situation you've got, and it will give you a list of appropriate tree species for that sort of setting. It's quite a useful document. Okay. I think we haven't got any more new questions. I hope I've managed to cover.
Just to mention, Katie, we have somebody asking about a parish council that's more than half is in the National Park, and they've found that it's had a big impact on planning issues and how this new assessment might make a change to that, or how will that affect that?
So, sorry, the part of the parish that's particularly affected is in the National Park or is outside?
Yes, majority of it is.
Oh yes, I can see.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, at that point, you do come under two planning authorities and two Landscape Character Assessments and two local plans. So it really depends where you go. But certainly, we always endeavour to look at both when we're doing responses with a boundary of the South Downs or vice versa, which does provide the responses for South Downs on the smaller scale developments or applications that have come in.
And by introducing the valued characteristics into the Winchester update, that will, like I say, help give you evidence for things that you want to protect. You're also probably in the setting of the National Park, so they should take that into account within the National Park as well. But, you know, so things that you think are of value that we haven't highlighted, yeah, please do let us know.
Okay, so yeah, that opportunity will come in September, when we can get the draft document out to you in a format that is good to be receivable, so it is quite large. And then look forward to comments and queries coming back from that. Okay. Okay. I think we've probably now got to the end. Please email us on the landscape architecture email that you received the invite on. Or I think Stuart has put myself and his email addresses in the Q and A as well. So any of those is absolutely fine to email us if you've got any further queries. Good. Well, I hope you all have an enjoyable rest of the evening. And we have finished a little bit earlier than I thought we might have done, which, good or not, we've got better weather now, so maybe people can go and enjoy that. And look forward to receiving comments in September. Thank you very much.